All right.
So it's a.
Uh, it is time that was noticed and posted for our work session. And this is Tuesday, March the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's one thirty T M. We're in the Board of Supervising Executive Conference Room, Melly Lane Bisbee. Any items on this agenda is open for discussion. And we'll begin with the roll call, District One. Uh, District Two Supervisor English is present. District Three. Um, well, we don't need a quorum, and we don't have one. So we'll move on. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams, computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling six oh two, six oh nine, seven five one three, or eight eight eight, six eight zero, six seven one four, conference I D, five two six, three eight one, seven eight three pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five two zero, four three two, nine two zero zeros, or direction. Work sessions are a time for the county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. And as always, in when we have work sessions, I like for introductions to be, um, at the time when you speak so that the record can be complete as to who made what statements. And whenever possible, I like for you to to try and make a connection with the Strategic Work Plan, because we we all, as the board, need to be kept aware of how our strategic work plan is moving forward. So that would be appropriate. I just noticed that Ms. Judd has joined us, so we do have two members of the board present today.
And Madam Chair, there are some internet issues around the county, so just for your awareness.
If they miss us, they miss us. So, um, all right. Uh, discussion today is, uh, we're going to start with Marty Haverty, who's our Public Works Director, and and we'll let you lead it from there, Marty.
All right. Madam Chair, Marty Haverty, fellow Works Director. I think if we can start out on the handout to your right-hand side, the highway work outline, we're probably, we should have had this meeting back in January, and at that time, we would have provided a Gantt chart showing that you exactly where we're going to be, what we're going to be doing during this quarter. This quarter is almost over now, so, uh, Jason and I thought we would just provide an outline of what we did since our last meeting, and then give a little bit of a glimpse of where we're going in this next quarter, and we should be having another quarterly meeting here soon. So what I wanted to do was just kind of highlight what's been going on since October and moving up into, uh, February here. And we broke this down into the different road yards. Uh, one of one of the major things, it was the initiative that Supervisor Judd, uh, put before us to, uh, work in a partnership with the Sun sites Community Center, and we refurbished their parking lot. So that was a, uh, one of the major things we've done since October going into November. But at the same time, uh, we we've been doing a lot of storm cleanup since this time, and it's been taking up an awful lot of our time to do storm debris, especially up in the Benson area. Bisbee area, as you can see, storm repair. Uh, one of the initiatives that we've really been pushing, uh, during this past year is mowing of our right of ways, trying to get our right of ways mowed. Uh, I I feel like it makes it a lot safer road for the public to drive down when they're not driving down a tunnel, it seems like at times when, uh, you know, you that you have the grass growing up three or four feet up, and if you're driving in a car, you you just can't see anything. So, uh, hopefully it'll reduce the number of county incidents also. Uh, we have a lot of C C S O that hit deer and everything else out there in the middle of the night. We get these right of ways mowed down, and they can get their lights on and see some of these hazards before they, uh, have these accidents. So overall, that's that's one of the initiatives we did. I came to the board last year, and we bought two additional mowers. Uh, since that time, uh, through my weekly, um, weekly correspondence to you guys, I also informed you that I was buying two more additional mowers, so we have those in as well. So right now, in the previously, we had five mowers. Now we have nine out there running on the roads and and really putting the effort into getting these right of ways cleaned up. Strategically, the other thing that we're trying to do with these right of ways is, uh, it, once we get these cleaned up and get a really, uh, sustainable program going where we can keep the right of ways cleared, I'd like to move in to adopt a highway, where we can get some of the community out there, and they can go out and clean up the highways and and whatnot. We already have the plan drafted, and we want to move forward with it, but I don't want to have right of ways that are three foot tall and and be sending the public out there trying to pick through all the the grass and the trees and whatnot. So that's kind of the longer term plan on the right of ways. Going into Bisbee, uh, one of the major things that we're just finishing up is we crackfilling Rancho Carmella subdivision, and that's the subdivision over by Coach's College, kind of a forgotten about subdivision a lot of times, kind of a county enclave, but the roads out there are all chip sealed, and so, uh, before that, they were asphalt. And, uh, so now we're going in, crack fill, doing some major maintenance in there. One of the other things that you guys, uh, the board, uh, authorized was, uh, us buying the crack fill machine, so we did that, and we've been utilizing that quite a bit. Melly Lane Parking Lot since October, uh, we did the the fog and the restripe, and, uh, we just recently completed about twenty miles of Charleston Road, crack filling that that road there. Um, moving into Douglas. A lot of work that we we've accomplished, but we we've done some asphalt repair on King's Highway, Brooks Road, uh, Gleason Road. Right now, we're planning on chip sealing that, so we're doing edge of pavement and, um, uh, doing potholes and whatnot. And we're going to go in and crack fill part of Brooks Road. One of the major things I did was demoed the old, uh, office down at the, uh, Douglas Road Yard, that humongous trailer that was down there that was full of mold. We have that demoed, and we have plain flat dirt there now. Moving into Wilcox, we spent a lot, awful lot of time, Bell Ranch, Kansas Settlement, Sulfur Springs, Parker Ranch Road, which are all of the roads that the dairy uses all around that dairy area. And we spent a lot of time repairing edge of pavement, um, doing some major patches there, and so that that's taken up a lot of our time. Uh, one of the other things that Supervisor Judd has has talked about quite a bit is Hardy Road, and, um, we went in and did a complete soil stabilization to all the dirt portion of that, rebuilt that, put crowns on it, and, uh, I don't know if it's going to really control the dust, which is one of Supervisor Judd's major complaints. I I still see some dust popping up because it's it's kind of access to Apollani's. So, uh, we'd like to chip it, but we just haven't got to that point yet with our county engineer. She's doing design.
Madam Chair, Mr. Haverty, if I could, if I could speak to that, the people who were having the issue with the dust have now passed away. I don't know if that it helps it, but they they do have, um, they aren't complaining anymore. So anyway, what I what I'd like to say is, I think, a bigger problem that we saw there was actually it getting so muddy that some of our visitors in the summer were getting stuck out there on that road. So I think the stabilization is going to help with that more than the dust, don't you think?
Yeah, I I think so. I I think it's it, that road is like concrete right now, even though it's a dirt road. It's it's a really nice drive for the most part. Um, it it would still be nice to, uh, get some chip seal down there. I I think there was some issues on the right of way, and I'm I'm not real sure about it. And that was the kind of the thing that was holding us back from chip sealing that road.
I think so, too.
Yeah.
Now that I've made my little break into the meeting, um, the Sun Sites Community Center was contributing five thousand dollars to their parking lot project, and they haven't received a bill. So if anybody in that meeting knows what to do about that, um, they're waiting. So if you need to contact me to get a, get a person's name and address, they would love to contribute.
Okay.
Five thousand to that project.
Yeah, that that would be great, and that'd be help very helpful. Yeah, we we went ahead and, uh, we billed against your account, and I think we're about five thousand dollars short, so, uh, it'd be good to get that tied up. Yeah. Anything else, uh, Ms. Judd, on, uh, your area there?
No, thank you.
Okay. So, yeah, the major repair down in Douglas was, uh, demo demo in the road yard, but we've also done a lot, quite a bit of asphalt repair. Wilcox, like I said, was asphalt, uh, repair on the dairy areas, uh, soil stabilization on Party Road. Then as we're moving forward, um, we're planning on doing a resurfacing of the service service to service center, uh, getting that parking lot similar to this one, and just trying to preserve that asset. It would be probably a million, million and a half to redo that parking lot, and it's kind of at the end of its useful life. So, uh, we have a contractor that's going to be coming in in May and doing a similar job to this to preserve that so we can push out that expense for another, maybe five or six years, and, uh.
You're talking about the one by the hospital or the one?
Yes, yeah. Uh, I think, uh, engineering was working on Foothills Drive, uh, parking lot there. Uh, I think a couple of years ago, they brought you some different renderings and layouts, and I really don't know where they're at on that. But, um, once that's settled in, we could sure go in and and repair that one also.
Before you move from the highways.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I have a question that's asked to me frequently, and of course, we've we've had someone appearing at our our board meetings for quite some time about a road that we don't maintain.
Yeah.
And I don't know that in all the years that I've been on the board, that the Highway Department has ever presented to the board a list of roads that, uh, people don't need to access.
Sure.
And that were that are on our system and that we do maintain.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think it would be appropriate for us to have some kind of a, a list of roads that, um, I mean, you all are traveling our roads all the time, and so you know which roads have people on, which roads actually are used as access and which are not, because times have changed since we started that program with the state where they required us to list the the places and not do anything else.
Yeah.
And so I think we need to look at, things have changed since then.
Yeah.
So maybe we need to change our resources, and and that's a process. It probably isn't immediate, but I think we need to be aware of that.
Mm-hmm.
And there may be roads that we need to take on and roads that we need to draw.
Yeah, and, you know.
I've noticed in some of these old subdivisions even, I mean, we're we're maintaining roads that, like, nobody lives on, nobody drives on them.
Yeah.
Um, I, one that's always classic to me is the one that's out by Coach's College, and even my grandchildren were laughing about it, saying, well, granted, I've I've never seen a four-lane road going into a place where there's only three houses.
Right.
And and we maintain it, you know? Two lanes in and two lanes out, you know? And then around that subdivision, and and there are no people.
Yeah. Why, I tell you, Rich and Sharon have kind of pushed the initiative of Jackie and I taking a look at that, and we've had a couple of meetings on it so far. Uh, it's kind of moving over into Jackie's hands. I looked at my capacity to maybe, like, this individual that's coming out here saying there's, you know, so many homes on this road, not on the other. What's my capacity? Could I be able to go over and blade these roads? And so I kind of looked at that. Now Jackie's going in and looking at, uh, doing analysis on the number of houses on a road, whether it's county maintained or not, and what would need to happen to bring it up to standards. I I think we have another meeting scheduled here soon.
Yeah, so we we know this is going to be a long process.
Right.
We started this, I think, about six months ago, just to start having these conversations to get to a point where we can develop this list, but also when we get that list is then to have conversations with the county attorney's office to see that we're not doing anything beyond what we're.
There are bended roads that basically turn into driveways.
Yeah.
And we maintain them. And I'm going, it's it's kind of hard for me to justify that.
Yeah.
Um.
So hopefully we'll get some sanity from this, you know, taking a really hard look at it.
Right.
And get a plan together to where.
Well, that's that's what I'm asking, is I think we need to look all around the county at where where the needs are.
Right.
And and where the need isn't anymore. I mean, just as an example.
Chairman, sorry to interrupt, but I agree with the chairman a hundred percent. Thank you, Ann. Good suggestion.
I I was talking with, um, a rancher in particular that, I I don't know how far it is out to the boss ranch, but some people say twenty miles. And he said, I don't know why you people are out there on that road all the time. You only need to blade it once a year. You see what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, and he and his family are the only people that live out there, apparently.
Right. And and with those types of comments, that's that's actually absolutely true. Um, we could reduce those types of things and maybe expand to another road and take care of the residents out there. So, um, I think it'll help to really take a good look at this. I I think it's a good initiative to do. It's it's kind of a painful task, but at the same time, it's something that we really need to do.
Okay, we can move on. I just wanted to mention that because we haven't discussed it as a group. I didn't realize that you and Sharon and Rich were talking about it, so.
Yeah, me, Sharon, Rich, and Jackie. So we're kind of working on this.
We try to anticipate issues of the board. And, uh.
We're that. They're ready for it.
Yeah. So when you bring it up, we're ready.
All right.
So if you flip that page over, there's not much on it, but it's just kind of some of the things that we have planned. And one of the, one of the major ones is, um, like I said, we're going to do the service to service center, get that thing tightened up. But the other one that's really big is Charleston Road Crack Seal. Uh, what Jason and I are looking at is going in and doing the pavement preservation all the way from Sierra Vista to Alfreda. So we do Charleston, and then we hit Gleason and get Gleason back. And to do that with our resources, our our human resources, we're we're looking at contracting out the Charleston Road portion of that. And so when they're doing Charleston Road, we're going to be doing Gleason, and that'll be about forty miles of chip seal that we're we're going to be doing, and we should have done this spring. So it it's going to be a major impact to that drivability of that whole stretch going from Sierra Vista. We're kind of looking at east to the west side of the county, you know, and making sure that we're good in those directions. So, um, it's something different that we haven't done in the past, and we've we've taken a look at it, and we we really think we'll be able to make an impact to our road system and really preserve the pavement if we go out and contract. We have plenty of money in our budget, and we can go out and spend, you know. Right now, we have thirty-six, thirty-seven staff members in highways. In the past, it's all, it's been up into the sixties, you know? Um, and we we kind of changed modes and had a paradigm shift, and what we were doing going more from construction to maintenance. And so we really need to concentrate on maintenance, but I I really look at, I don't want to ramp up staff up into the fifty range and then not have anything for them to do for, you know, half of the year. So we're kind of experimenting with this. If we can get some assistance from a local contractor, go in, do some chip maintenance chip seal, and then we'll run our crews just as hard as we ever have and, uh, really make an impact out there on the roads.
Well, I I think since we worked on on Gleason Road, you know, to get a mile and another mile and another mile, you know, so it's finally all, you know, chip sealed now.
Yeah.
That, um, that makes perfect sense.
Yeah, you know, it's.
Because a lot of people, you know, going, uh, to the Sierra Vista area, you know, do take that road and Charleston Road.
Yeah.
You know, because it's convenient for them.
If you drive that stretch from Alfredo all the way into Sierra Vista, going Gleason Road and then Charleston Road, that's one of the nicest, most scenic roads we have, two roads that we have in the county. It's a really nice drive. So hopefully it'd be good for tourism and, you know, everything else, and get those things looking like, you know, brand new roads.
Well, I, I I'm speaking for the past, but it seems to me as though we, um, we in the past have had a more competent, a better crew to do chip sealing than to hire that out.
Right.
And because when you compare the work that the contractors have done and the work that the county has done, we're better at that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, we don't really do asphalt.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, resurfacing, you know, those companies may be good for that.
Right.
But I I would hesitate to to have them to come in to do our chip seal because we seem to have, um, gotten that process to where we're really good at it.
Yeah, we we are really good at it, and, uh, one of the things is we've had so much turnover, we've had a lot of retirements and and things like that, so we we have a lot of new people on.
So we have to build that expertise up again.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So that's kind of where we're going, and Jason has a few roads that Supervisor Judd may be interested, if you can let him know kind of where you think we're going to chip seal here in the spring.
Sure.
Especially up north.
Yeah, this is Jason Posty, Operation Superintendent. Um, we're looking at the Wilcox areas, uh, Parker Ranch Road has to be revamped a little bit, Johann's, Marguerite, Packing Plant, Old Stewart, Circle I. Uh, there may be a little bit of patchwork on Fort Grant, and that's what we have up in the Wilcox area.
How big is that Circle I?
Uh, it's about nine miles, I think.
What what we're looking at is trying to, we have seven hundred miles of paved roads in the county.
Mm-hmm.
What I'm looking at is trying to get ten percent of those done. Um, in between that, we would fog, in between, when we need to chip again, we'd fog it to extend the life, but we're looking at a average life of about ten years. So every ten years, we should be able to go in and maintain every road in the county. So that's kind of our overarching plan to.
Does Circle I have drainage problems? Seems like that's been on the radar.
All of Wilcox has drainage problems that we work through constantly.
So, Madam Chair, the the north part of Circle I is not, um, paved. It's only paved to Stewart, to Old Stewart Road. The north part is where they have the biggest problems, and it's not paved and probably on purpose. So Morro Road turns off of that right at that W, that big W, and those roads are a mess, and they're probably easier for us to maintain if they're dirt, in my opinion. So, but the drainage problem isn't really on the, um, the paved part.
Okay.
Well, that's kind of where we're looking at moving in this next quarter. We're we're going to have another quarterly update. We'll get a Gantt chart, have all this lined out on the exact times or close to the exact times on when we're going to be in each one of these areas. But the the process that we're looking at is seventy miles is our goal to get completed during this, uh, chip seal season and maintenance season. And at the same time, we want to get about two hundred miles of, uh, roads fogged to preserve that pavement and, uh, have them looking good. So, uh, every probably three or four years, we want to hit every road with fog, every ten with chip seal, and doing ten percent of the roads, that's just a gateway to do that. So that's kind of where we're we're looking at strategy-wise. So that would be it for highways unless anybody has any questions.
I I have no further questions, Ms. Judd. No questions.
I I chimed in when I needed to. Thank you.
Okay. I I think the next one on the list is the solid waste update. One thing I wanted to talk to you guys about, and it's the one, the handout that's right in front of you, that's kind of grayish, I guess, I think. Uh, I had, uh, our business manager, just for informational purposes and just for fun, look at how many customers come into our transfer stations during a yearly period or a monthly period. Um, I had Jessica Moore, our business manager, go in and analyze and see exactly at each transfer station, how many people are frequenting the the place. During the seven-month period that's depicted here from July twenty-one to January twenty-two, you can see that we've serviced sixty-seven thousand customers, which are all mostly county residents. You flip that over, and I think the numbers are, that, it's, these are a little bit more up to date, but it's another seven-month period we want to kind of compare, and we're running sixty-five thousand. So during the course of a year, if you include the rural customers, uh, we're seeing about a hundred and thirty, hundred and forty thousand people, uh, face to face at our transfer station. So the customer service is is very important to us. One of our challenges is we have a six-day-a-week operation. It's really hard to get customer service training for, uh, staff that are scattered out through six days a week. So we really need to probably do customer service training. They do an excellent job. We don't have a lot of complaints at all. Uh, you have a lot of angry customers that come in that maybe don't want to breathe the dump and that kind of thing, but for the most part, we do pretty well. We're we're, uh, accepting credit cards and debit cards now at each one of the urban transfer stations and the landfill. So customer service is something that's really important and really important, and you can see you have a lot of constituents coming through there. So I I really want to get customer service training. I may have to do it on a Sunday and pull my fee attendants in and do overtime. Uh, but we we need to probably do something in that direction because the impact's pretty huge in the county, I think, with this number of people coming through our sites on a daily basis. I don't think any other department probably sees this many people at all or is impacted by any this number of people coming through our, uh, any county building. So it's just something that people don't really realize, but we see a lot of counter open, so, uh, I think we need to ramp that up and get some customer service training out there, make sure that we're putting our best foot forward. But that's all I wanted to show you on this.
What about the the rural transfer stations?
Yeah, we, the analysis on this is pretty in-depth. She spent a lot of time on it, so she hadn't got to the rules yet. It would be really interesting to take a look at, and it may tell some tales. Some of the, uh, a couple of the, uh, transfer stations up in the north don't have many customers at all. The San Simone, uh, isn't frequented hardly at all. Bowie doesn't have a lot of customers, even though Bowie is free, uh, for people to tip. But I, next time, I think maybe I can give you a report on our traffic coming into our rural. I I think it might be interesting.
Well, specifically because that's a board responsibility, you know, more than a customer-oriented responsibility, and we need to know that we're spending the quarter million dollars at the right place. So I think that's what you charge us, isn't it?
A little bit more than that now, with the cost going up.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, but.
So be prepared to justify yourselves.
We'll do it. Steve Jones has every bit of that information, great detail. The other thing I wanted to talk just a little bit about, yeah, there's this cash flow that I have. This is what I presented to the Great Review Advisory Board probably a couple of weeks ago. And basically, what we're what we're doing with this is we're looking at, uh, what our revenue is, what our expenses are, and what the tipping fees are or should be, or what our recommendations would be to the Board of Supervisors. If you go down in the very bottom right-hand, uh, column of this, that shows our year-end projection, and it's has it broken down per ton, cost per ton and revenue per ton. If you can see on the top blue band on the far right-hand bottom corner.
Well, the top right, bottom.
I'm sorry, bottom, bottom right, but in that area, there's a band, a blue band, and it says seventy-three oh nine. Basically, that's what we're projecting, that we're going to earn per ton at the end of the year. Okay? So we charge sixty-four dollars a time, you know, at the scale. We're, our revenue is seventy-three. So the difference there is through initiative by our employees recycling and running a roll-off business, and we're gaining about three or four hundred thousand dollars a year through. And we're gaining about three or four hundred thousand dollars a year through their efforts. That most solid waste people don't ever do in any other, uh, county or business. So, uh, you know, we, we attribute that to our employees and the hard work that they're pushing out there. If you roll down to the next blue band down below that, you can see seventy dollars and eighty-seven cents. That's our expenses. And that's, our expenses are kind of off right now because we're getting ready to, uh, build this next cell. So we're putting a lot of money away into our capital account to have the money to build the next cell, which is cell five. But you can see, even if we ran this way the whole year, uh, the green band at the bottom, there's a number, two dollars. I'm trying to read it, two dollars and twenty-two cents. That's the, uh, profit that we're making per ton, okay? So you multiply that by the number of tons coming in and that's about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we'll make this year. Now, you move over to the next, we're over to the left just slightly. Um, last year we made eight dollars and seventy-five cents per ton, seventy-six cents per ton, which is equivalent of seven hundred thousand. So last year we made a profit of seven hundred thousand on the, on the solid waste system as a whole. Which has helped pay down that debt that we had, okay? So I only wanted to bring that up because this opposite side of this page, if you flip it over. One of our major stress points is building this next cell. We don't want to build it as we have in the past, not have enough money in our capital account to pay for the cell construction. And then we go into the hole to the general fund and we owe general fund money. So we really have spent a lot of time trying to get cash in the bank and get the money to pay for this next cell. So, uh, July first, let this last year, we had two point five million that we rolled in. Some of that was that seven hundred thousand point profit that we had. Um, we contributed from our O N M account, nine hundred thousand, uh, earned about nine grand interest. I already have the design done on the, uh, cell and, uh, we're ready to go out to bid for that. And we've spent about fifty thousand dollars on design consultants so far. So basically we have three point four million ready. We're gonna be contributing another one point one million next year from our revenues gained from tipping fees. So we should have about four point five million dollars when the contractor hits the ground, ready to construct. Uh, we just did budget, we're working through budget. We found another five hundred thousand, so we have five, five million ready to go. I just got the, uh, engineer's estimate of what this next cell is gonna cost and it's gonna be five million. So moving in this next cell, when we award the bid, we should have enough money for building the cell. We won't go into debt, we won't owe general fund any money. So that's the only reason why I wanted to bring this up. Uh, when we did cell four, it cost us two million dollars. We, we got a gong a deal. We had fifteen people, fifteen contractors come in and show interest in the job, created a lot of competition, really drove down the, the cost. And it was two million. Hopefully that happens again and we can go two million and we'll have, you know, all this extra money. But we're looking at worst-case scenario right now on, on the construction costs and everything else. I, I've been in contact with Annie in procurement, I think she's online here. Um, she's getting ready to put this out to bid and my design consultant is gonna help us with the pre-bid process and all that. So we'll, we'll be ready to go. And September probably, October, this cell that we're in now, cell four, it's gonna be fall, so we have to have it done by then.
I, I just have a curiosity, engineering costs always seem to jump out at me because it seems like we spend so much on engineering. Isn't the cell, the cell is a cell, is a cell, how come it has to be engineered every time?
Yeah.
If you're at the same place.
Yeah. It, uh, yeah, it makes sense.
I mean, can't you use a house plan over and over and over?
Yeah, you think so, but each cell is a little bit different size and the, yeah.
Why? Why is it a different size?
That's just the way they designed it to start with, maybe so that we'd hire engineers, I don't know. But then you have the leachate drainage system and all that cell tie, the cell liner tie-ins and everything else.
But you have that on every single one, that's what I'm saying, that I don't understand why you have to keep engineering it.
And I, I think it's mainly because of the size. The size is always different, yeah.
Imagine your requirement for any kind of waste, but you need updated engineering.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I have a guess.
ADQ has to prove the plans.
Right.
I have a guess that it has to do with the land that they're putting the cell in because our, our topography on our ground is really, really different as you move around. So that could affect the size as well, so.
Well, I mean, these cells are all at the same spot, you know?
They all tie into each other.
But it's not flat ground, it's a little bit hilly out there.
Yeah, a lot of it's stormwater drainage and when you have the other cells, we have, you know, four of them almost complete.
I know engineers can always justify it, you know, one way or the other.
I'm not, I'm not an engineer.
But I just, just curiosity is like, you know, I keep thinking of it as a, a building plan, why can't you just duplicate it?
Exactly.
Because we in government are always looking at things that are duplicatable, you know, process, but when it comes to engineering, nope, every single one is different.
Yeah.
Very different.
They gave me a stack of plans like this. It's, yeah, thirty-five thousand, I think we spent so far, and then they're gonna do future work for us. So, yeah. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to talk about a little bit was light and heavy fleet. Um, I, I got a report from Fred that really know where we're at. You know, we had, you've probably heard some noise about supply chain issues and not getting vehicles in and all that. But at the first of the year, uh, Fred went out and he ordered twenty replacement vehicles, Fred being the superintendent for fleet and heavy fleet. Um, he ordered twenty replacement vehicles. Uh, we started receiving replacements back in, we got about half of them, we received ten. Uh, uh, got another one in just the other day, but the remaining ten are expected to come in, uh, June of twenty-three. So right towards the end of fiscal year. Um, we, we had some issues with some of the upfits on, uh, CCSO, but we've got that ironed out. In addition to those twenty vehicles for replacement, we've added additional, uh, fourteen for the CCSO with their big grant. And we received five back in October, uh, got one in March, two will be delivered probably tomorrow or the next day. So those are trickling in as well. Uh, and then the remaining six probably will be the end of June. Uh, problem with those are the upfits, you know, putting the bells and whistles on all those things and getting those done. I think we had the sheriff's office was gonna do it and we came in and assisted a little bit and got them rolling because we had like five or six vehicles down there, brand new that since October that hadn't been outfitted yet. So I, I think we're moving in the right direction there. Uh, in addition to that, on the heavy fleet side, we've, uh, spent a lot of money, um, uh, replacement equipment. One of them being the compact at the landfill with the, almost a million dollars. That should be good, right? For how long, guys? Probably ten years, ten years. So we're, right now, we're in the mode where we're saving for that again, for the next replacement of that.
You say at the landfill?
Yeah, the landfill. It's, it's a monster piece of footman and basically it's what makes our money for us. It compacts the trash and densifies the trash. We, we measure that in a cubic yard and we go out every quarter and do a flyover to measure our performance, our density of that furniture. And we're right up with anybody in the West Coast, uh, our performance. We, we're, we could compete with anybody. So they're doing a really good job out there, which extends the life of landfill and saves us money and makes us money. So that's, that's all I have unless you guys have any questions for me.
I don't have any additional questions, I'm just compliments. It seems like that you guys are always trying to, um, exceed yourself and I think that's good. You know, instead of, you're not competing with anybody else, you're just competing with yourself, trying to do, trying to do better and, and, and that's what we hope everybody is doing.
Yeah.
You know, we all benefit, but actually, you know, the, the pride and the, um, the accomplishment is always down to the departments. So you, you should be very proud of what you're doing and the, the people that you have working for you.
Absolutely, yeah, thanks.
Do you have any questions or comments, Ms. Judd?
I don't have anything else, just thank you. You are doing a good job and the updates are so useful.
They're very, very important for us to be able to find out. Uh, there are still people out there in the public that think we run the road yards, but we, we have to dispel them all the time. No, I have no idea what they think.
Well, you used to, didn't you?
Oh, that was.
Years?
That was probably in the seventies.
Yeah.
In the seventies, they did. But not, not since I've been a supervisor.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, next meeting will be Tuesday, March the twenty-eighth at ten AM. And it's a regular board meeting and the board of supervisors hearing right now. So with nothing further, this work session is adjourned.